Putnam County School Board for Wednesday, February 10th is now in session. Ms., I have asked Ms. Sandy Gilyard if she'd open us within our invocation.
Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for life, health, strength. God, we thank you for provisions. And we thank you, God, for an opportunity to serve. Now, God, we pray your divine guidance in this meeting, that you will guide our hearts and our minds, God, and help us to do the things that are in the best interest of our students and what we perceive, God, that will move them forward. Bless all that are here, God. Bless their homes, their families, their children. In Christ's name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Gilyard. Now, Dr. Searcy will do some introductions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Ms. Crawford, can you hear me okay?
I can.
Good, good. It's good to have you.
Thank you.
Just want to, first of all, thank you for coming out today. I know we have a board meeting next week, but we want to give you some additional information on some things we've talked about in the past and also some information on instructional materials that you'll be looking at again on Tuesday. But let me just give you some introductory information and then we're going to call some of our staff up to give you some presentations today and let you discuss these items. This year, in addition to providing instructional support and resources for students and teachers throughout our district, the Department of Teaching and Learning has also been working to prepare for the transition to the state's new BEST standards. That's B-E-S-T standards. With these new benchmarks for excellent student thinking, which is what BEST stands for, comes a focus on professional learning and support, the consideration of new resources and materials, and eventually looking forward to new or revised assessments. Mrs. Azula is going to share with you our draft instructional materials plan, including a timeline today. This plan in its current form includes a step-by-step description of our adoption process and the resources we are currently considering. She will return to you on February 16th with a narrowed-down list of considered materials. Our goal today is to share this process and details with you for your consideration and feedback. And before she comes up, I want to also talk about the next segment of our workshop, and that will be a continuation of our conversation on my administration's proposal for revitalization of our school district. Last January 7th, we presented our initial three-phase proposal for closing schools and the plan for securing funding and building new schools. Today, Associate Superintendent Thomas Bowlen will bring you some adjustments to the original proposal after considering input from the facilities work group and from our community. I want to personally thank Mr. Bowlen and his staff for working so diligently on this bold plan. I also want to thank all the parents, teachers, and community members who have given us input on the plan. You will be considering today's updated proposal at the February 16th School Board Meeting for approval. If the plan is approved, we will immediately begin the process of implementing Phase One of the revitalization plan. As I stated to you on January 7th, the February 16th will serve as a first step on the tight wire from our current state of aged facilities to the bright image of new state-of-the-art facilities that are safe, technologically sound, and instructionally aligned to the needs of our students. So thank you for your consideration today, and we look forward to your comments. Thank you. Mrs. Azula?
Thank you. I'm going to set my timer because I'm very aware of my strengths and my weaknesses. So I've got the timer going, and I just want to start off by saying thanks to all of you for giving me a little bit of your time and attention today. I want to thank those in our community who are watching at home as well. We are just really appreciative for an opportunity to address the board and share some of the work that has been going on behind the scenes throughout this school year. So for those of you who maybe need this reminder, in addition to lots of the challenges that we've experienced this year and any of the other number of words that you could use to describe this year, words like courage, creativity of teachers and all of our staff, the celebrations that we have in place because of all of the amazing things that have been going on in the face of lots of challenges, I also bring you another word, and that word is change. And there is lots of change on the horizon. And so I wanted to just revisit this idea of the transition to our BEST standards and what that means for us for this year and for future and upcoming years. So this year, we are actually in an ELA adoption year. Now, for those of you who've been a part of this process for a number of years, you are probably very used to us coming to you around October and talking about all the work that we've already done with teachers and other folks throughout the district in this process. But this year has been very different, and so for a multitude of reasons, beginning with some survey data that we collected at the very beginning of the year from all of our core ELA teachers, we decided that we would push the timeline to as far as we could to give our teachers an opportunity to really get into the school year, learn all of their new tools for this school year, and gain a little bit of comfortability around that before introducing them to what is coming and what is on the horizon. So with that being said, I just wanted to go ahead and say that upfront, that normally we would come to you a little bit sooner than this, but at the request of our folks, we did opt to postpone just a little bit this year to give them an opportunity to get a little bit more solid with what they were already trying to accomplish. So as you know, the state did adopt brand-new standards, and they did for ELA and for mathematics. As a reminder, in your packet, you've got this transition timeline, and the first group that is actually transitioning next year is our K-2 ELA core teachers, as well as, and this is not on the state's timeline, this was a recent add by the state, as well as our ELA non-core teachers in other grade levels. So when I say that, I mean people who maybe teach a creative writing course or maybe provide intensive reading for some of our students. That group will be the first group to transition with the new school year of '21-'22. The following school year, we have a big lift ahead of us and a long road to get there, but we're excited, and we know we can do this. In '22-'23, we will be transitioning everyone who teaches ELA and mathematics to the new BEST standards. So next year, we start with K-2 ELA only, followed by everyone for ELA and math, from K through 12. With this movement to new ELA standards, we are in the process of looking at new ELA materials. And I just want to add a caveat that has been on all of the state materials. I just want to call your attention to it one more time, that this is an aggressive timeline. It's the most aggressive timeline that I, in my 24 years in Putnam County, have experienced. We are moving quickly to new, and so it was really important that we started this process, even though we didn't pull teachers into the process early on. We did begin pulling our district-level ELA coaches, our district ELL coach, and several others from our leadership team into the process of learning the new standards and starting with the materials glimpses, is what I'll call them, so that we could develop some expertise on our team so that we could better support teachers as they started this process. So that actually started for our district back in February of last year with a great invitation to Impact Florida, which is a group of districts from around Florida who worked together to engage with the new BEST standards, share PD ideas with one another, begin to examine our instructional materials that we were currently using for the Florida standards, identify needs and gaps, and so on and so forth, so that by the time we were ready to engage with teachers, we had some expertise developed on our team as well. For this year, we are looking at these courses for adoption. We are considering all K through 8 core ELA, as well as our 9th through 12th grade ELA core classes. And you'll notice at the very bottom there, we are considering also adopting for our intensive reading classes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes, especially as it pertains to our middle grades ELA intensive reading classes. I've included some language in the packet for the board that pulls out some of the language from the statute, just so that as we go through certain pieces, if you want to refer back to it, it's there for ease of use. So if you have a question about, well, what exactly are we adopting? What are the major tools? What does that mean? That's here for you. But I'm going to jump us ahead to the timeline. So we're going to start with the beginning of this school year, and I'm just going to, I'm not going to talk you through every bullet point. I'm just going to share out a few highlights of some of the work that happened in August and December in preparation for pulling teachers together in January and throughout the remainder of this year for some of this work. As I shared, we had a district instructional materials review team that was made up of all of our district ELA coaches and our ELL coach. These folks participated in, I guess it was probably around eight sessions through our NIFEC Educational Consortium around the new standards and instructional materials. And I have to say publicly what a great job they did at really jumping in and in helping with that task. In addition, back in, at the beginning of the year, around the end of September, we sent out a survey to all schools for our elementary, our middle school, and our high school folks, and we actually got some great responses. It was in regards to our current materials that they have in place in the classroom, because for us, it was really important to get a sense of what do teachers love about what we already have, and what do they feel challenged by in what we already have. We know that ELA is an area for the last four years. We didn't have FSA data last year, but if you look at our FSA data for the four years prior, ELA is the one area where we have been making great progress every year on that state assessment. Every year, our number goes up and up and up. And so we wanted to be sure that as we started looking at materials, that we were considering what has really caused that and what has maybe hindered that in some regards or challenged us. So this is just a brief summary of some of their responses. You can see, our folks are very honest. We have incredible educators in our district, and they are not afraid to tell you exactly what worked and what didn't work. So you can see, we had 89 elementary responses. We had fewer middle grades. We had about nine of the core ELA teachers respond there. And then this one, actually, I'm sorry, it should say high school. We had 18 responses of core ELA high school teachers who provided us with some feedback. Moving forward, I just want to really quickly hit on some things from January. So we told you, we polled and surveyed teachers the beginning of the year. We trained our district ELA coaches and some of our leadership team. Beginning in January, we began pulling teachers together virtually to do some BEST standards ELA professional learning, because we knew we couldn't look at materials and ask them about standards alignment if we had not already at least started in the work of these new standards. So our people, as always, did not disappoint. I'm so pleased to share that we actually provided support for all of our K-2 teachers who teach ELA, which is incredible. Every one of them made it to either the initial session or the makeup session, and we trained all of our 9th through 12th grade core ELA teachers. Now, this first session was just an introduction on the six ELA expectations and the new BEST standards and the reading strand. We will continue to provide additional PD throughout the year, but we felt like that was the best place to start for our folks. Our team, I'm proud to say, these wonderful ladies, and there are several others as well, but this is who I could capture, these incredible ladies helped me put together a little magic for our teachers ahead of those virtual sessions. We took in hand-delivered boxes with thank-you cards and snacks and new learning supplies and all the materials that they might need for the day to help make that virtual experience just a little bit more engaging and also to help them understand just how much we appreciate everything that they've done so far this year, including giving us just a little bit of their time and attention in January. We're so thankful. And so these ladies are part of the larger team who helped make this happen. In addition to that, this team attended the NIFEC Instructional Materials Fair in January, where we spent two days engaged in publisher presentations, rubric training to understand all of the criteria and what everyone was looking for. And then we were able to narrow down some of what you see at the fair, and if any of you have ever been to an instructional materials fair, it can be somewhat overwhelming. You have the people who have made the short bid list, and then you have lots of others who typically attend the fair. So you really have to be very discerning as you're looking through the materials and look with a very defined lens, and that's what we did. And we were able to bring back to the district a few narrowed-down selections, so some lists of materials after we sort of used some criteria to weed out folks who either maybe their product could not integrate with Canvas, or maybe they weren't really best-aligned yet, et cetera. We were able to weed some of those out so that our teachers would not be inundated with that when we begin to pull them to the table to take a deep look at materials. We did ask every single school to nominate people for the team, and here we go. And here was our school-based reviewer nominee criteria, just a few key things that were very important to the leadership team. One was that we wanted teachers who had already, already were exhibiting a strong commitment to the three core actions of ELA that our district really promotes and has as a foundation to all of our ELA PD. We also asked that they be a person who really is an advocate and a practitioner of student-centered instruction, and we have a few criteria points there for them to consider. We asked for them to think about reading endorsed, reading certified, or even in-progress folks, people who had some background in the areas of reading. Finally, we asked for them to put an emphasis on folks who had three or more years of experience for this phase. We will open it up to others after we share with you all today. But for this initial phase of narrowing down, we really looked for the experts among all of the incredible experts. We know all of our people are so phenomenal, and within that, we were looking for representation who really had a good, strong background with reading, and finally, highly effective or effective. But I will tell you this, while we gave them this nominee criteria, we did tell them there was no expectation that a teacher exhibited all of that. You could have four out of the five, or even three out of the five, if you had good justification for sending them to the team. And I'm very happy to share with you that this past couple of weeks, we've been working with those people very intensively, and that is a phenomenal group of educators who I cannot wait to celebrate with you all, because the work that they put in to helping us further narrow down these selections was incredible. I mean, we were back and forth throughout the weekend, in the evenings. My life kind of has become textbook adoption, but I love it because I love getting to interact with our teachers in this way and get to hear all of their excitement and their worries and their wonderings about these different publishers and resources. So it's pretty incredible. As we move forward into the next phase of this process, today, in just a few minutes, I'm going to show you where our list stands as of today. You'll notice that our elementary list is a little bit, we have one additional publisher still listed there. Our hope is to narrow down to two within this week before I meet with you guys again on February 16th. But we want to bring two to the board and have our entire school population, who would like to be able to provide additional input and feedback on the final two that we have for each grade band. So that will be happening throughout the month of February. Again, on the 16th, we'll come to you with two for each that are our final narrowing selections, and then we will open it up for educator, public, other stakeholder feedback. Actually, I had two students recently reach out and ask if they could provide feedback on the new resources, which I absolutely love. I don't know that I would have wanted to do that when I was in high school, but they really, we have some kids who really care about the text that's put in front of them as well. So we're going to make a link available for the public to give some feedback. This is not the official contesting and feedback time. This is just us seeking additional stakeholder input and feedback so that we make sure that we're making the best decision for our students and for our community and for our teachers as well. So after the board meeting on the 16th, we'll publish that. We'll get that up on the website. I'll show you where you'll be able to find it. If you go to the menu and you see where our, where our teaching and learning page there, that's just a screenshot of the bottom of the menu. We're all the way there at the bottom in that first column, where it says instructional materials adoption process on the website. It currently looks like the snapshot that you see here. It's just a chart with all of the important days listed. That will morph after the 16th, and it will look more like these pages that you see ahead. So currently, remember I told you in K through 6, we haven't narrowed down to 2 yet, so you'll see three different resources listed there. Under each of the columns, you'll find the public access link for that resource. We're going to put this up on the website so that anyone who would like to can go and take a look at those public materials. In addition to having the links there, we'll also have a survey link so that folks can give me their input with evidence to support that input. And again, this will be a much less formal process than what our teachers and our district reviewers went through, but we still feel like it's an important piece of this whole puzzle, is to get their take on it. In 7th and 8th grade, we are looking currently at College Board and a new company who is called Savis. And for those of you, again, who've been around a little bit like me, this is part of the old Pearson. So that may sound familiar, more familiar to you, but they are now currently Savis. I'm not sure that it's the entire Pearson company. I think it may be a subset of them, but they have a new product out that is aligned to the BEST standards. And incidentally, we are also looking at those same two for 9th through 12th grade as well. And again, these are the narrowed-down selections based on the teacher feedback that we've been gathering over the last few weeks throughout January and then into the start of February. This is the narrowed-down selection with their input, those experts and their input in mind. You'll notice for intensive, you'll notice for intensive reading, I don't have a public link yet. I'm working with the rep for that. But I will go ahead and share with you that for intensive reading middle grades, we are looking to possibly adopt the Read 180 Systems 44 program. We have tried that program in multiple grade levels over decades, right? And what we have found over the last few years is that it seems to be most impactful for our 7th and 8th grade population. We had a private organization help us look at our data for intervention success, and this was one of the products in 7th and 8th grade that truly showed the most gains for students. So we are looking at possibly adopting it for 7th and 8th grade reading intervention so that we would then be able to use some of our textbook funds to help meet the need with that program. We already have the program here in the district, but as we expand and as we need new materials to meet that need, it would be nice for that to be the adopted program for those courses so that we can use those funds to help provide that for our kids. Looking ahead into March, March 23rd is another date that's important to keep in mind. This will be the date when we share the official completed instructional materials plan with you. It's also when we will have to open for public comment around the instructional materials. And then we will also, on the 23rd, post an official parent caregiver protest form so that if anybody has reasons why they would like to protest the final selection, they're able to do that. And again, that is part of state statute. And so on the 6th, you all will hopefully vote to approve the final materials. On the 7th, the 30-day window to contest will open for our parents and our communities. And then on May 7th, the 30-day window will actually close. May 10th, if we have to have a public hearing, meaning we've had anyone who's protested, that hearing will need to happen on May 10th. And May 18th, we'll make the final vote for the adoption of the materials, all in preparation for the July 1st deadline of Dr. Searcy certifying our results for FLDOE. So we are working with a bit of a timeline here, and again, I know that this is, it feels a little quicker than it has in the past. I assure you, that's not the case, but we wanted to really make sure that our teachers did not have even more on their plates during this very unprecedented school year. I'm going to actually jump over the slide with selection and go to purchasing, and I do want to say that I may, there's a statement here in the plan about the purchasing of materials, and so we've been very clear with all of our teacher reviewers, but I want to say this as well. We will purchase as grade levels get ready to transition. So I want to make sure that our folks understand that this coming year, K-2 is our priority first, as well as some of those non-core teachers, and then we will follow with our other folks. And we are hoping to have those materials here, of course, long before they are required to implement so that we can provide quality, in-depth PD over time and give folks a chance to really try on these new standards, try out the new materials, and get a sense of what all that is going to mean for them before the year in which they are required to implement. It just may not be in August when school starts this coming year. So I did want to be clear on that. We will follow the timeline schedules, and we will, we're going to do our very best to provide as much as possible ahead of their timelines, but we are taking timelines into consideration as we plan our PD and plan for purchasing. Finally, looking ahead, I just want to put this timeline back in front of you. If you see any of our instructional supporters or any of our teachers out and about, I'm sure you will, just thank them. Thank them over and over and over again. Our educators throughout this district have made amazing things happen this year for kids, and I just cannot ever have an opportunity to address folks without saying that over and over and over again. We're so thankful for them. We are so thankful for their patience. We're thankful for their dedication and all the time outside of the school day that they devote to this work. They're just, they're nothing short of amazing, and they have a big task ahead of them. We'll be here for them every step of the way, but we just wanted to make sure today that you had an opportunity to hear the plan, provide us with any feedback, and I am always available if you have questions. If you want more about a certain part of the plan, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm happy to give you any additional information that you may be interested in.
Thank you. And again, what was that? Best.
BEST. The BEST, they're called, interestingly enough, BEST standards, but that BEST stands for Benchmarks for Excellent Student Thinking.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
Yeah.
Could you repeat the, that box that was empty? All I got was the 144, the box for the...
Oh, yes, for intensive reading?
Yes.
That one, we're looking at Read 180 and Systems 44. They're a package out of Scholastic. So that's something we already have in place in our middle schools for intervention. We've had it in place for a few years, really targeted to that grade band. But two years ago, we actually had a partnering organization, K-12 Lift, look at our data and help us look at which interventions were having the highest effect in Putnam, because it's great to look at evidence from all other places, but we wanted to know here what's working best for our kids, and that was one that had the highest impact for that middle grades group. So we're pretty excited about the possibilities and the fact that they are actually on the state board list, on the short bid list for adoption this year.
I think it's amazing that as board members, we get questioned a lot of times on why, why don't we teach this like they used to, or why don't we teach something else? And they have no idea how the state does make you jump through the hoops just to decide on how you're going to meet their standards and what adoption, what you're going to adopt and use to get there. So it's a very complicated and time-consuming strategy, but I think you guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Very evident, a lot of work has been done already. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We have more BEST ELA standards training coming up. If you have an interest and you want to know what those are all about, please reach out to me as well. I'm happy to invite you, and if you're able, you're always welcome to join into those virtual sessions. We'd love to have you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, sir.
That was quite a presentation by Mrs. Azula. I always sound a lot smarter when I go before Mrs. Azula than after Mrs. Azula. One of those little jokes to break up the monotony. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't go quite so well. Always sound a lot smarter when I go before Mississauga than after Mississauga. One of those little jokes to break up the monotony, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't go quite so well. All right, so while I'm thanking people, I definitely want to thank the staff that worked so very hard on this plan. I never, well, it's very, it's a very rare time in my day when I'm not thinking about this plan in some shape, form, or fashion. But the people around me do a tremendous job and they, they, they make me look good. And I have John Chastain and Travis Woods, they love attention. But those guys are phenomenal, they're very hardworking. They, they actually even come up with some pretty good ideas every now and then and they make me listen to them. And I value them for that the most. I'd also like to thank the community and, you know, everyone that's watching. Yeah, we all have a stake in our schools, but I particularly want to thank those who have reached out to us and invited us to either come and speak and share our vision. But more importantly, listen and hear their concerns. And, you know, we can spend hours and hours and hours dissecting something and we can think we know it all, but we often find that we don't. And along the way, great innovative ideas are born. And we just have to stay cognizant of the fact that we need to be flexible enough so when a good idea comes along, we listen and if it's something that we can do, we do it. And I think that'll be reflected today as I go forward in the plan. But before I introduce our new plan, I'd like to just kind of go back over the July 7th workshop, not take you through every grueling slide like I did back then, but just hit some of the, some of the high points. I always think it's a good idea to define the problem and then suggest a solution and then what's happened since then and then prepare any new ideas we have, or I'm sorry, present any new ideas that we have. Okay, so we started out here and this slide basically is the very core of our issues here in our district. And it just kind of illustrates that, that back in the 96, 97 school year, leading all the way up to last school year, and we think this school year is a bit of an anomaly because of COVID, so we're not using this year's data, but we certainly have a lot fewer students this year than we did last year. And I know you've heard a lot about that. But at the end of last year, we had almost 2,300 students less than we had going back to the 96, 97 school year. As far as funding, that's a loss of almost $10 million of base student funding. And it's also a loss of over 17 million, almost $18 million when you look at state local funding that include categorical, categoricals such as transportation, safe schools, reading grant textbooks, et cetera. All right, issues with declining enrollment. When you, when you think about declining enrollment, it all comes to money. Salaries are not competitive. Teacher recruitment is very difficult. Benefits such as health insurance are not as competitive. Declining school enrollment means a declining budget, but our overall operations are still the same. Our maintenance department should be funded out of the general fund, but it's funded through capital funds. And so we don't have the money available to renovate our schools or build new schools. We, declining school enrollment makes it hard to maintain CTE programs. We have lots and lots of economy of scale issues. And then we, it's well documented that we have lack of bus drivers due to the poor salary that we're able to offer. If you look over at St. Johns County, and I hate using them, but they're like the poster child for everything we could be. They pay, it's kind of ridiculous of what they are, well, it's a gross amount of money that they're paying their bus drivers. And they still have a driver shortage. So I know we have a lot of, we have a lot to do to catch up. All right, so this slide just kind of talks about the available capacity that goes along with losing so many students. So the, the school that jumps off or the district that kind of jumps off the page here for me is Flagler County. They have almost 3,000 more students than we have and yet they have half the schools that we have. So we just have an enormous amount of unused student stations or empty desk in our 18 schools. And I shouldn't say empty desk, I should say empty classrooms because we fill up a classroom. You know, we'll have 18 students in a classroom and we'll have one teacher, but we'll have several empty classrooms within a, any, any given school across the district. All right, so that's the first half of our problem. The second half of our problem is the overall age of our facilities. We are tied, when looking at the average age of facilities in each of the school district, our district is tied for second for having the oldest buildings in the entire state. When you get down to Putnam, you'll see that the average age of our buildings is 43 years old. All right, so issues with aging facilities. They're very hard to harden, hard to harden, they're very difficult to harden. Keeping schools safe in that fashion, keeping people, bad guys out. Schools weren't designed like that 45 years ago. We have lots and lots of indoor air quality problems. We have problems with cast iron pipes, sewer pipes, roofing issues, technology issues, and it just goes on and on and on. It's not, I don't, I don't have to hit you over the head to note if you have a very, very old building, it costs more to maintain. So in summary, due to our financial condition, as a result of declining student, declining student enrollment, we will ultimately be forced to enter into a reduction in workforce in order to make payroll at our current level of wages and benefits. Meanwhile, our surrounding districts continue to offer superior wages and benefits. Because we are funding our maintenance department with capital funds, we are unable to adequately renovate our existing outdated facilities, build new facilities, or even apply for special facilities funding. The solution, and this is kind of where we were leading up to at the last board workshop. And this is the bold part of coming up with a solution that we can take a bucket of lemons and hopefully make some great lemonade out of it. And that's consolidate the existing facilities and build safe, innovative, and energy-efficient schools. And we just used a picture of Pearson Elementary, which is right down the school as an example of a great new school. All right, and then I introduced the three-phase plan. And we call this our revitalization plan. And this was the original recommendation from the superintendent to the board and for the direction that we wanted to go. So in the initial proposal, we proposed closing Miller, Jenkins, Mellon, E.H. Miller, and Melrose. And then in phase two, we were going to construct comprehensive 712 high schools across the district and the three areas of the district. And then in phase three, we would come back and construct pre-K 6 and in some cases, just K6 schools across the district. And then we would ultimately whittle the number of schools we have down from 18 to 10 schools. All right, so since then, go ahead, one slide. We posted our FAQ on our district website. We got lots and lots and lots of feedback there. We've met with numerous stakeholders from various civic and nonprofit organizations, Kiwanis Rotary, Putnam County African-American Cultural Arts Council. We've met with, in small groups, we've met in formal settings and informal settings. We met with city and county officials. We've met with faculty and staffs that are impacted by this revitalization plan. And then we created a work group with members of the community and district employees. Before I start talking about the work group, Wendy, go back one slide. So some of the, I want you to kind of look at phase one. The majority of the, our largest issues happen in phase one of our plan. For example, down in Crescent City, we wanted, they, the community did not want sixth graders to go to the high school. That was the biggest bone of contention there. Another big issue that came up was that if you're going to go all K6 and 712, why have sixth and seventh graders at C-Lo? And then, and then since we're going to a K6 model and then a 712, why have this middle step where you have just that anomaly here in the greater Palaca area? If you're going to do it, go ahead and do it and be K6, 712 across the district. Another big issue we had with phase one was the E.H. Miller community was very concerned with, with the uncertainty of to be determined. We had some initial ideas about where the school's population would go and we were thinking of cluster sites, but that was very concerning to that population of students and parents. And then there was a void left in the Melrose community. This entire plan is to revitalize our district, not to hurt any particular community. And it's, it's become very evident that that school is tied directly into the, the very life of the community of Melrose. In addition to that, we have 71 students who attend that particular school who don't live in our district. And those parents have been very adamant about the fact that they won't send their students to any school in Putnam County that's not Melrose. They don't have to, they don't live in our county. So that kind of compounds the declining enrollment when you just take 71 more kids right off the map, right off the bat. So those were lots and lots and lots of issues that we took into the work group. And everywhere else, we went around the community. We did lots and lots of listening and I think we came up with some, some pretty good ideas. But before I go into that, I have a member of the actual work group who I'd like to come up. She actually spoke at one of the board members, I'm sorry, at one of the board meetings about her concerns about us closing E.H. Miller. So we decided to include her in on the work group and I'd like for her to come up just to talk about her overall experience on the work group and then I'll come back and get down into the weeds of our latest proposal.
And so this, this work group was created after our initial breakout with this plan. Okay, I was going to say, because I, I didn't know about that, that you had that, okay, all right.
When we last left, our marching orders, yes ma'am, were going to be, we were going to go back and we were going to develop an FAQ and then we would develop a work group. And then we, I said out loud that we would have very few formal meetings or even informal meetings because of the pandemic, but we found creative ways to even pull that off.
Okay.
To Thomas's credit and the committee and the people that worked with him, everything initially was to be determined. So now we're trying to get through all the hurdles to actually determine. And like he said, it'll probably be fluid even as we progress if something comes up that we haven't thought about.
Right, one thing I have learned in this entire process is number one, patience is a virtue and number two, flexibility is another one. You can't be too stuck on any particular idea because, and I, and I've seen things change not only once, but twice in a single day, you know, when we thought we had a problem solved, so. No. Ms. Atkins, you want to come up?
I'm back, y'all.
And it's no problem.
Thank you for having me. As Mr. Bowling mentioned, I was invited to be part of the facilities work group and I was thrilled about that and graciously accepted. I heard, I believe it was Mrs. Crawford that mentioned during the school board meeting last month that it takes bold leadership to present a plan such as this. I agree with that. And when I heard bold initially, I thought, mhm, bold's right. But I also think now, after hearing a little bit more, I think it also takes compassionate and humble leadership to admit the fact that it wasn't necessarily rolled out the right way and there were some cracks that were left that, you know, really needed to have a look taken at it. So I appreciate that humble and compassionate leadership in combination with that bold leadership. The work group met and Mr. Thea Bold and Mr. Stout presented an idea that would move the E.H. Miller students and pre-K to C-Lo. I was cautiously optimistic, went home, digested it. I'm the kind of person who has to think about things a little bit, have to chew on it, have to sleep on it, pray about it, and wound up requesting a tour. Dr. Surensey and Mr. Bowling graciously, humbly accepted my offer, accepted my request and let me have a tour of the building. That night, I sent them a big old long email about things that I was concerned about, to which they responded and they responded professionally and they understood where I was coming from. As Mr. Bowling mentioned, we have to be fluid and things change. I was then contacted last week and said, guess what? We have another idea. Mr. Chastain and his partner, Mr. Woods, started looking around at things under my understanding, and yes, I'm calling y'all out again. They said, I think we have a better idea. Well, I'd already digested C-Lo. I wasn't about hearing another idea, but, you know, we have to, we have to be flexible, we have to work through things. So again, I said, can I go tour the building? Again, they let me. I appreciate that very much. I left there not cautiously optimistic, but optimistic. I really felt good about Mellon Elementary and seeing what the ideas were, the plans specifically for the medically fragile students. I feel good about the ideas for the other students that go to E.H. Miller and even for the pre-K students. I'm excited to think that pre-K may have an opportunity to be exposed to the students that go to E.H. Miller. I think that at three and four years old, if you get to see somebody who's in a wheelchair or who has, you know, a different piece of equipment or who interacts differently than you do, you're more accepting of that. And unless you have somebody in your family who's like that, it's just not your norm, it's not your everyday. So I think that's a good step. After that tour, rather than a big old long list of things, I have six. I have six things that I think need to be adjusted at Mellon Elementary for it to properly accommodate E.H. Miller and their unique needs for their students. Y'all, I was a banker for 17 years, so I understand the financial issue that the district is in. I get it that change has to happen, I sincerely do. But my heart is still first and foremost for these students. My baby will be out of school in just a few years. So honestly, by the time all of this comes to fruition, I may not have a child that's in the school district at that point. I still care though that this is done the right way. I still care that the facility meets the needs of these students. And I really think that there's been a lot of love, a lot of thought put into this and I'm excited and optimistic to see what the changes are going to look like. So thank you again for having me. Thank you for honoring my request to look at the facility so many times and humoring me a little bit. And I'm excited to see where we're going from here.
Thank you for your courage to come up and, and your first presentation to the board was very heartfelt. And I don't, I even got involved in a text early on that, but I've since quit because you can't control what people are going to think and say. But I have to tell you that superintendent and his staff didn't just wake up one morning and say, we're going to go out and make everybody miserable. They had to start somewhere and they're going to continue to work through the process and we're going to work with them. And they're going to continue, they'll probably during this period of time find several more things.
Of course.
Like your six items. But I mean, that's, their hearts in it. I mean, they, you don't get this far in this business without absolutely loving kids and caring about them, so.
Yes, sir.
I commend the people that are working on this, they're, they care, they really do.
Absolutely. Well, and you know, last month, whenever I was here and spoke to y'all, that was a boo hoo and mama who was scared to death about to be determined.
But you're supposed to be.
Absolutely. But today I feel like a optimistic mama who, you know, we have a plan and I think that we're going to go in the right direction and I have no doubt that everybody's heart is in the right place and that the right decisions are going to be made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danz, right?
So it was a great group of people such as Ms. Atkins and several other community members and staff members who got together and, and we came up with. who got together, uh, and, and we came up with this, the, the latest recommendation. And, um, I've, I've learned enough through all of this to not call it the final recommendation, um, but we'll call it the latest recommendation, and, and, uh, and this is what we're going to give you to consider, uh, for February sixteenth. Okay, so let's go to the, uh, proposed phase plan. Alright, so I'm gonna go over each one of these, and Phase One is on one page, as it stands right here on this slide, but if you notice, every school in the district is listed because every school is going to be, uh, just a little bit different next year. Alright, so we decided to, uh, take on the K six model and in some cases, pre-K six. So let's start with, uh, Kelly Smith. We talked about removing Kelly Smith's pre-K and keeping their sixth grade. Now, the reason that we're doing that is in the greater Palaca area, if you take out pre-K, or I'm sorry, if you leave sixth grade and all the, uh, existing elementary schools and the pre-K, um, we're not going to have enough capacity in some cases. Uh, we played with the idea over the years about having a pre-K center, uh, and even maybe having Melon as the pre-K center at one point. And we thought that this would be a good opportunity, um, if we had a way to fund it. Pre-K isn't, isn't necessarily funded, at least not enough to run a school site unless you have other means, uh, to help support it. E S C pre-K is however funded, um, and, and, you know, pretty adequately so. Uh, and so are our students at E H Miller. So it kind of solves the problem if you bring those two populations of, of students together, and then it would also, um, support financially the, the rest of our pre-K students in Palaca. So it's just a natural, natural fit. Uh, and, and, uh, again, we initially thought about C Low. But to John and Travis's credit, they took a look at Melon and it's just, um, it, it requires a lot less retrofit to make the pre-K and, uh, the, the, uh, E H Miller population live on one campus. Um, there's not a whole lot that needs to be done. That list of six is nothing, believe me. Uh, we've looked at it and, and I, I smile, I'm tickled pink with, with such a, a short list. Uh, we can make that happen very easily. Alright, so Mosley is pretty much the same thing. We'll send the, uh, pre-K, uh, over to, uh, Melon, and they'll keep their sixth grade. James A. Long, same thing. Take out the pre-K, keep the sixth graders. Melon, um, Melon students will, um, be redispersed as it stands right now, but the students from E H Miller and all the central area pre-K and E S C pre-K will occupy that campus. That is the, uh, recommendation for Melon. Browning Pierce, same thing, remove pre-K and keep sixth grade. Alright, so we're still in the Palaca area, we're moving up to sixth grade. What about the sixth grade center itself? It is no longer necessary. So the sixth grade students will remain at their assigned elementary schools. This building would close as a school and district staff would occupy C Low.
Very good.
Alright, so at Jenkins, we are still recommending, uh, the closure of that facility. Um, we spoke to that group of people. It doesn't, uh, do our hard good at all to stay on that particular recommendation. And at this time, we don't have plans to even build on Jenkins', Jenkins' property uh, because of its location near the, uh, railroad track, and we can't, um, get special facilities funding for a school site that's next to the railroad track.
The state prohibits that, that don't, don't, be next to a railroad track like that.
Yes, they, they won't approve it, yes, ma'am.
And, and the, I'm only going to speak up in reference to the name.
I actually spoke with, uh, Mr. Granger.
Yes.
Uh, on the way to work yesterday, we spoke in detail. And I told him, um, anytime we change schools at all, especially when you go from like a high school to a junior, senior, or you combine two campuses with, which we're coming to in this plan, you're gonna have to have a naming committee, and he would definitely be on that naming committee, um, to, to, and, and I fully expect him to show up at the next board meeting as well, uh, just to speak to the board about the importance of the name Robert H. Jenkins.
Thank you.
And making sure that somehow it, it remains, uh, a part of our school district.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly. Okay, and, uh, for Palaca High School. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Um, I ha- I need to go back to C Low, if that's okay.
Okay.
So we, district staff would be there, and we also, don't we need to keep that open for, um, the auditorium, because it's actually the only auditorium that we have in Putnam County?
Well, it's the, it's one of two, um, auditoriums that we have. The other one is at the Miller Middle School, Miller Middle Campus, yes, ma'am, and, and, um, you're right. And, and we will have, I, I talked to the head custodian of that, that campus already. Um, she's very vested in that campus and wants to remain. Um, and, and I'm thinking we, since we're gonna be a little bit heavy on custodians initially, wouldn't be a bad idea to keep at least one other, uh, there to help support that. But she's taken very good care of that campus over the year, uh, years, and I'm sure she'll continue. Um, she'll be instrumental in, yes, ma'am, instrumental in scheduling, uh, events for, for both the auditorium, the gymnasium, uh, and just several other, uh, uh, activities that we can see going on. Uh, we're, we, we.
Even the stadium.
We, we plan to, and I'll, I'll hit it a little bit later, in later phases of the plan, in Phase Three. Um, we, that is a site that will have one of our elementary schools. And, uh, and, and I'll talk about another idea that was born, but instead of having a K six school in the greater Palaca area, not the east Palaca, but just the Palaca, um, we'll have two elementary schools, and one will probably be K three, I'm sorry, K two, and the other would be three six. Uh, and that way, they're not directly competing with one another, and they'll naturally feed into it. But I said all that to say, C Low is going to occupy the space for one of those schools, and that auditorium will be incorporated into the new design of that particular school. So we're fully aware of that, and we know the, uh, importance of the upkeep of that particular campus, and, uh, and that, that is a future site because, primarily because of, of the auditorium. D O E won't let us build on that size anymore, so it's important to keep it, as is, is the same, uh, for the one in Crescent City. Alright, so, uh, Palaca High School would immediately go to seven twelve in, in, uh, Phase One. Um, and then the E H Miller students again would be re- uh, relocated to the Melon campus. Uh, before I move on with anything else, um, are there any questions about Phase One? I know that was a lot. That did kind of solve a lot of issues, um, that I talked about to begin with. Um, number one, um, Melrose would still be in play. Well, I'm sorry, I'm still, I, I, I need to talk about west and south, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Alright, that was just the central area of Phase One. Uh, the west area, Melrose would stay open and keep all sixth grade students, and that would take up some of their student stations. Aquila, Aquila would, uh, be the same. Um, they would have their pre-K students and, and all the way up through sixth grade, and that would fill up the rest of their campus without dragging in a lot of additional portables. Um, Interlockin Elementary School would keep all their sixth grade students, and then Price and Interlockin would merge together as one school. So it's gonna be Price, Interlockin, Interlockin, Price. I don't know, that's why we have naming committees. Um, Campus Two is very, very outdated on Interlockin High School's property. Price is in better condition. Um, so we plan to shut down or take out of service all of the buildings south of Culinary Arts, if you're familiar with how I H S has laid out, which is essentially Campus Two. We take out Culinary Arts, but it's, it costs too much to retrofit another area of the campus with the hoods and the stoves, the freezers, et cetera.
Well, that's a wonderful move because it's just right adjacent to the campus, you know, it's, it's a good idea.
And then the, um, and then the, 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 the buildings on Interlockin High School's property that will be in service for quite some time and will probably be renovated and, um, incorporated into the new high school would be the center of the campus, which is the media center, the band room, and Building Thirty-seven, right there in the center of the campus. Um, the, the seven twelve, the new Price Interlockin, um, pretty much starts at, uh, Building Thirty-seven going north all the way through Price. Price needs to be occupied. I see Ed Smith's class being relocated to Price, um, to help out with, uh, I mean, some of the, uh, space that they'll have because they don't have sixth graders. Uh, but that campus will still very much be in play, all of Price and most of Interlockin High, again, combined to make one seven twelve school. Uh, the local administration, if this plan is approved and, and when they are named, they'll figure out how to make all that work. That, that is for the curriculum, Laura France and her department and, and Dr. Surrancey. We all work together on all of this, but they'll have to figure out exactly, you know, how to make all of that work out. Q Y Roberts naturally is, is pretty much, is, is our most modern facility. Uh, it will remain the, uh, seven twelve magnet for high achieving students, there won't be any change there. It's the Cambridge program. Alright, down in Crescent City, same thing holds, same pattern holds. We'll keep, uh, sixth graders at Middleton Bernie, and that solves the, uh, issue about sending those kids to the high school. We were probably gonna have to send two portables in either direction, whether it was at the high school or whether it was at the elementary school. Uh, we went down and took a look at the, uh, campus, and we found that we could put a couple of portables on Middleton Bernie's property without putting them on the playground. We were able to make that work, so, uh, we think that's a better move. And, and again, it keeps us consistent across the district, um, being K six, seven twelve. And then that is essentially it for Phase One. When you flip over to Phase, uh, Phase is two, yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, at Middleton Bernie, would they have pre-K too?
They would.
So it'll be pre-K through six.
The pre-K center is only for the, uh, greater Palaca area.
Okay.
It was, yes, sir.
And so that means, um, Browning Pierce students would stay at Brown.
With the exception of Browning Pierce, they get to come to the pre-K center as well.
At Melon.
Okay, Ms. Crawford?
Well, I, that's what I was gonna ask, because it didn't say about the pre-K in the west and south. So they'll stay at their.
Yes, ma'am, they'll stay at their elementary schools.
Okay.
And as far as the auditorium and the gym at Miller?
Yeah, and I think I wanna back up, and I wanna talk about, I'll talk about that one first, and then I wanna go back to Jenkins. Uh, but, but starting there, um, I, we can't put the wagon before the horse. Uh, the board has to approve this plan, but if it does, uh, we'll reach out to the city, um, and, and other organizations in Crescent City, and we would welcome any help that, that you would, um, offer, um, Ms. Pickens in this endeavor. But we'd like to do memorandums of, of understanding, um, so we could perhaps lease the, the auditorium, the gymnasium, maybe even the cafeteria, um, to the city or any other kind of civic organization. Uh, we're very interested in the upkeep of that property. Miller will be a future site to build a school on, so we, we need to occupy it. Um, we, we've already started preliminary conversations with the Sheriff's Department, um, possibly occupying a part of Miller. Uh, again, we, we wanna put it to good use, uh, in the interim. I'm not interested in seeing any property values diminish, uh, or any buildings fall apart because of lack of use and become eyesores in any particular community. Um, so we're very interested in that, and, and the same holds true for Jenkins. Um, the mayor has already reached out to us about possibilities for, uh, the, the neighborhood facility, and that's kind of what we call it, cause that's what they used to call it, but the gymnasium building. Uh, I think, is that Building Nine? Five, um, Building Five, um, to see if we could come up with something and maybe some of the facilities outback for just, uh, programs for the city of Palaca. Uh, and then there's other possibilities about the other parts of the campus as well with other entities, so. Uh, but, but again, we're very concerned with, with, um, making sure, uh, any properties that we're not using in the here and now, um, are put to good use. Some property will be, um, reserved for transitional property. So when we start either renovating or building new facilities at a site, uh, that may be marked for a holder, you know, a group of, uh, the student stations that would be available to send students to while new buildings are being built to keep us from buying, uh, a ton of portables.
So pretty much, so pretty much what we're looking at now with the ones that are not going to be occupied because we redistributed, we're looking at operation costs pretty much just being electrical. Cause you're gonna keep the neighborhood facility center open. We're gonna make sure that we're, you're in a dialogue with the Sheriff's Department for Miller.
Yes, ma'am.
Et cetera, et cetera, okay, okay. And I still keep it under a million.
Yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Well, you don't get from having the, e- e- easily from having, being number fifty-four on the most aged facilities in the state to, to get up to where the superintendent and, and staff have, have, are trying to do. So that's, to me, it's, it's a wonderful new start after the first, you know, proposal.
And, and I feel now that our community, as Mrs. Atkins stated, feel a little better about it. It seems like they have more answers to, to their questions, and it doesn't seem like they were left out of the equation, which initially, it did appear that way. And now they feel like, hey, nobody's, you're not trying to pull a fast one. We are looking at the thing.
Yes, ma'am, we won't find a perfect solution to every problem, and anytime you close a school, it's bad news for somebody.
Yeah, they, they work on, we work on studies all the time that you don't, you don't just say, hey, we're working on a study, you know, and, and it might take a couple of years, but then when it comes out, then you find out about it. So I don't know, I guess, like Ms. Gilliard said, people felt left out, but it really wasn't time for, for us to look at it, so. But we do, we know now.
Let me interrupt a minute, uh, Ms. Crawford saying she can't hear. Can you check the equipment?
David turned off.
The picture is blurry.
Yeah, she did, kinda.
I'll get blamed for it, though.
Alright, and so, um, that's Phase One. Phase Two and Phase Three, essentially, um, we haven't had a lot of pushback here. Um, as a matter of fact, I, I've heard lots and lots of, uh, good things about the possibilities, um, that, that, you know, fewer and, and new innovative schools could, could, um, bring for our entire community, not just our school district. Um, cause our district and, and community, they're, uh, intertwined and, and, um, brand new schools could mean an, an awful lot of great things for, for our, our community. We're optimistic about it anyway, so there are no changes to Phase Two and Three. And then if you go to the next page, it's everything with every school and all three phases listed there together. If it's in gold, there's some type of clo- closure. If it's, uh, in yellow, it's some type of construction going on, uh, in that particular. So you can just look at a particular school and see what's happening in each phase of it. And it may be a little bit easier to follow in this format.
Mr. Bowling?
Yes.
I don't know when it's appropriate, but, um, I just need to let you know that I'm delivering these petitions to save Melrose. I picked them up yesterday at Dr. Smith's office. He was on our work group, the, the second work group. And, uh, I just need everyone to know that what you said is exactly right about Melrose. They're gonna pull this off. Uh, as of eleven A M., they have a donation of fifty thousand dollars in an effort to save Melrose School.
And the, the fifty thousand dollars, that was a, um, something that that community offered up. And they wanted us to take a look to see if we could somehow construct on that site since we were planning on building there anyway without moving those students. Um, the K six was tremendous in, in helping out with that. Um, but at some point, when construction starts, um, in order to, to not move those students off of that campus, we're gonna have to move portables on. Uh, and so just one year of renting portables would be right at about fifty thousand to, to pull that off. And, and when they heard that, they got busy raising money, so, uh, I can't say enough about their commitment. Um, and we, we were able to find a way to make that one work out. That's a, that's a, a happy ending. There aren't, there isn't always one, but in that particular case, we were able to make it happen. Um, those, those petitions aren't necessary because our official recommendation. Those those petitions aren't necessary because our official recommendation is to keep Melon open unless the board itself wants to go on the. I'm sorry, Melrose.
Get them to the chairman, Bud, and and that way they'll be in the record if somebody wants to.
You have additional comment?
Yes, and um I just, I need to hand all this to just the, not a board member. Excuse me. Something to consider here, please. I didn't get here in time.
You did wonderful.
Something to consider as well.
What is Bud handing out?
I sent it to you.
Oh, okay.
Uh one, I need clarification then, so the first phase, it would happen this fall at Price. Uh Mr. Smith's class would be there. Would it just be seven and eight?
I'm not sure, and that's um, that's just, we've been talking a lot about that just on, uh we call it different size of the house. I've been, just conversations with uh people in facilities and and uh we think that would be easy to just leave seventh and eighth there and have uh nine through twelve on the other campus. But as a former principal, I see the inherent um advantages of being able to have seventh and twelve all together and and everything from programs to sports and you name it. Logistically, you know, what happens on inclement day, inclement weather days when you're trying to go from one campus to the other or one set of buildings to the other. And if you have a kid in a wheelchair who wants to participate in programs. Um but but we're, luckily, I don't have to answer all those questions today. We'll name administrators. If this plan is approved, then they'll work on ideas to make that happen. I think I kinda mentioned that earlier.
And that's a local principal to say, um, yeah.
I'm not sure exactly what that'll look like. A lot of that'll be local decisions by by principals.
I think it should be pointed out to the board that the one thing that was stressed by Mr. um with the principals, Mr. Theobald and um Mr. Scott Stout. That uh with this plan, there'll be so much less of a transition for our students. If you think about the end of the, at the end plan, our students won't be making, say in Palaca, from K uh pre-K, they'll be at a site, they go K through six, they're at one site, and then go to high school. That's the minimum amount of transition and that, to me, is a plus, 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 especially in my end of the county.
Right. Good point.
I I do have a question about phase one. So with this plan, we meet the special facilities requirements of.
Absolutely.
Where footage, even though we're still occupying maybe portions of buildings, that doesn't matter? Well, like the district staff is in Cilo, that doesn't count against our school.
No, ma'am, cause they're no longer, they're no longer student stations. They wanna, uh DOE wants to see you um combine down and have a plan, a long range plan of either doing something with those student stations or doing away with them. Uh they won't consider you for special facilities funding if you have like lots and lots of available capacity. So either it needs to be taken out of service or or repurposed uh for something else. Um but the 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 thing that makes this plan attractive is the long range goal of going from eighteen school facilities down to ten, uh and they see the effort that we're putting into it. And initially, we we've gotten positive uh feedback for our efforts.
I would think that that would be very positive for, cause our E S E department's federal programs, so those would be the type of.
Yes.
That would be at the ceiling.
And I wanna say too, I I forget which which venue it was, but we were told just because of the completeness of this plan, I mean, a long term plan is very attractive to DOE because there are a lot of districts that apply for special facilities that just don't have that kind of forward thinking. But this this plan is very comprehensive and um, you know, they see we've put a lot of thought in that. Nothing against other districts, but I think they see that we're trying to really um make plans district wide, so I think it's a good thing.
I know that years ago, we we felt like growth was coming quicker and it and it and it didn't. But with the new interstate connector crossing right here in Edge of Clay County, it's going to change and we're going to have more people come, although being with across Florida Greenway running through the middle of us, it doesn't seem like it right now, but it's it's gonna change on the fringes from Alachua to Crescent City and Pearson to, you know, right on to the East Palaca, you know, border, so it's Hastings, what whatnot. You're looking at twenty-five, twenty-six thousand homes supposedly gonna be built, you know, in out beyond Yowlington before long, so it's coming this way. And that that staggered plan, it just makes all the difference in the world. Gives you time to drop back ten and punt if you have to from time to time. You did, you guys did a good job, Thomas. I'm tickled with that. And there'll be tweets, you guys will have.
So this this particular, um it'll it'll be presented to you on the um as the revitalization, uh revitalization plan and the consent agenda, but it'll be the three phases. Um and that's how it'll show up as supporting documentation. Um but for um discussion, input and action on the agenda as well is the bond referendum. And uh for that portion, I'll bring Ms. Odom up. And I'll remain available for questions.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna pass you out a hand out again. It's um basically what you got a couple of weeks ago whenever we were here before. I added a couple of spurts, a couple of pages to it. Jane, I'll email that to you. I wish I'd have thought of it before. I apologize. It does seem like we were just here a few days ago, um discussing the various ways that school districts can raise funds, like the half penny or the penny sales tax, uh levying millage, initiating a bond sale, certificates of participation, things like that. The Florida Constitution and state statutes limit the taxing powers of a governmental agency. Uh however, the Constitution does allow a governing body, in this case, the school board of Putnam County, to go directly to voters with a referendum uh to obtain approval for a specified reason. School districts authorized to sell bond for capital outlay purposes um to be repaid from local property taxes. Uh if the board does approve a referendum next week, the question will be presented to voters in the general election in November of twenty twenty-two. Once the authority is granted through voter approval, then general obligation bonds um may be issued by the governing body. We discussed earlier how large um of a bond Putnam County School District would be able to raise and how much it would cost for voters to pay back the bond over a period of twenty to thirty years. Um and I informed you, there's really no legal limit to the bonding capacity of a school district. It is limited by the amount that um the school district approves requesting and the amount that voters would approve by a simple majority vote in an election. The state does limit a district's um total millage to ten mills. That includes all the different categories. And this year, we did levy um five point eight nine seven mills. And for reference purposes, um one mill of additional taxes has a price tag of a dollar per thousand dollars of taxable value of a piece of property. And taxable value is, of course, the county market value minus homestead exemptions. The handout that I just provided you, um I passed it out at our last workshop and when I passed it out then, I showed you um what, a hundred million dollar bonding over twenty years and thirty years and a two hundred million bonding over twenty and thirty years, looks like for a property owner. And not yet knowing um the exact amount that we would seek approval on, all I've done today is added a couple of more pages, additional pages to it and added in a showing you how a three hundred million bonding over twenty years and thirty years would look. I have a financial analysis spreadsheet tool where I can adjust the dollar amount um of bonds we want to sell to raise money or the borrowing rate that we assume will be offered by entities willing to purchase our bonds and even an assumed yearly growth rate in the taxable assessed value of property in Putnam County. I won't go into great detail on all this uh today, but I will call your attention to, on each page, the peach colored um dollar amount highlighted on each page. On page one, and each page is numbered at the bottom right, a hundred million dollar bond issued over thirty years would increase the millage rate by one point oh eight mills. That would cost a taxpayer with an appraised home value of a hundred thousand dollars, which is a taxable value of seventy-five thousand and increase in taxes of eighty-one dollars if the entire hundred million dollars of bonds on this page had been issued. The millage increase would cost our property tax owners a dollar and eight cents of taxes for each a thousand of taxable property value. And as I mentioned earlier, we can determine uh projected costs based on any taxable value. And these projected costs are contingent upon the total bond issue amount chosen and assumed projected borrowing rate and a value growth rate of the increase of value over the years of the property tax base. The second page is just a two hundred million dollar bond issue with a payback payback period of thirty years. This two hundred million dollar uh bond issue over thirty years would inquire, would require an increase of millage of two point one seven mills. And this millage increase would cost our property tax owners two dollars and seventeen cents per thousand dollars of taxable property value and that same homeowner with an appraised home value of a hundred thousand dollars would see his taxes increased by a hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. The third page is the three hundred million dollar bond issue with a payback period of thirty years. It's three point two five mills and it would cost three dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand dollars of taxable property value and the same home with a hundred thousand dollar appraised value would uh increase the property owner's taxes by two hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. The fourth, fifth and sixth pages are just those same dollar amounts, but with a payback period of twenty years instead of thirty. A hundred million would take one point three eight mills, two hundred million would take two point seven six mills and three hundred million would need four point one five mills. And in that particular one, um that scenario would not work for a three hundred million at twenty years because um the millage of four point one seven, one five mills would put us at a millage rate, total millage rate of ten point oh four seven mills, which is above the maximum total millage of ten mills that a school district can impose. Again, we can do an analysis for any dollar amount and a number of years. Now, if the school board does approve um the district issuing a bond referendum, the question will be put to the voters in the next general election. And if the voters approve the bond referendum, the school district would be authorized to sell up uh to a maximum dollar amount to be determined by the school board uh when they uh approve this ability. And we would, it would be an amount of bonds that would be required to to implement phase two and pace, phase three of the new building construction phase. And the bonds, what they do is they represent long term general obligation that the district agrees to pay to the bondholders over, let's say, a thirty year period, cause in everything that we look at, that would be better for our property uh tax owners for a lower millage and everything. Uh each series of bonds will be issued only.
Excuse me, Ron, did you say thirty years would be?
Thirty years is what I would recommend if we go that route.
That's what I looked at, I looked there, yeah.
Cause it is a lower millage rate as you go throughout and we can do the analysis of the total overall cost and everything as we go about. Uh but we would only issue the bonds as the funds were needed. Each series of bond, like I said, would only be issued when necessary and that's similar to like a home equity loan line of credit. When it's, when it's handled that way, which is the proper way to do it, it limits the amount of outstanding debt at any period in time and the millage required to finance that outstanding debt. So again, we would only pull down bonds as they were needed. You wouldn't go out, if we chose two hundred million, if you all said that, we wouldn't go out and get the whole two hundred million at one time so that that entire millage is implemented right away. It would only be brought down as we go through the different phases and and require that money. The voters would be agreeing to add velour on property based taxes to fund the annual principal and interest payments of the bonds. And that tax would appear on their um property owner tax bills on the aligned label, school board debt service. Now, what you all would be required to do, if you do approve this, is you would be required to set a maximum dollar amount that you would approve and we might never actually hit that maximum, that that cap. Again, we would only draw down as needed. Now, one thing that I've seen over time is that, and I've been watching Miami Dade and some other counties, citizens without children often ask how passage of a bond referendum would benefit them. And we pretty much see that a district and a community is intertwined, like Thomas said. Research shows that adults and senior citizens will benefit through a stronger local economy, uh better skilled workforce and higher property values. In the short term, school upgrades in new schools generate high quality jobs and the ripple effects help local businesses and grow our local tax base. I looked at some different research that was out there and some particularly Miami Dade put out and they had a, they've had a very successful uh bond program. They've done it before and they're doing it again now. When the schools are completed, the new improved schools lead directly to better student performance and as a result, to more valuable communities. They found this through a lot of research that they did and some studies that they did. Higher academic performance in neighborhood schools make communities more attractive to businesses and new residents. And that increased um academic performance results in higher long term employment, higher earnings, lower crime, lower incarceration and social service costs for every taxpayer. And they had quite a bit of evidence to back up those claims. Uh approval of the bond referendum by um our local citizens would mean the district could replace our aging school facilities and bring a level of modernization, a safer environment, as was discussed earlier, and a more technologically advanced facility that would improve student learning in this community and better prepare all of our citizens of tomorrow and provide a more um prosperous and competitive economic climate for our county. As you know, the state of Florida requires a ballot measure for any school district that is um issuing new bonds that can be used for the purpose of acquiring, building, enlarging, furnishing or even improving buildings. It's just how you write the bond language on whatever you can do with the bonds. When considering issuing bonds, it is directly up to the school district to determine that um whether bonding is necessary for capital projects. There's no approval needed from uh state government agencies when seeking to issue bonds, but the Florida Department of Education does um play an advisory role in the process when calling for a resolution for an election. And when we actually have the election, a simple majority is needed in order to pass a school bond election in Florida. And all the bond measures, there's specific language that has to be there and all of them must end with the questions for bonds or against bonds to make it very simple. So we will be asking you, the board, to approve going directly to the voters in uh November twenty-two at the next board meeting at, with a uh discussion input and action um thing on the agenda. And you know, if that goes about, then we'll be, begin work on getting appropriate language and getting on the ballot uh for November of twenty twenty-two. Do any of you have questions for me?
I have, I have a question or two and it's, it'll be fairly brief. I haven't been through prior bond issue over the years. I, it's gonna be, in these changing times, I mean, we're in a time that we're granting emergency powers to the superintendent. We don't know how long that's gonna last. And but we're gonna have to really plan to know how much money we're gonna go after. Because if if we can draw it down, it is like a line of credit. You you don't know what the state's gonna put on us with additional safety measures to try to thwart shooters on campus and things like that. You don't know what's gonna happen with medicine, you know, medical, you know, and what what kind of filtration systems they may have. Who knows? But it's just, we're gonna need a a really good um you know, recommendation from our chief executive officer, superintendent on that, and I think we'll get one. I I'm comfortable with with proceeding. At first, I was a little apprehensive. I just, I can remember the county commission years ago coming to the district and wanting us to write a vision plan for students to pass their better place plan. And we did that. We didn't go out and try to, you know, stop their efforts. I mean, we we were encouraging that and I, does it still, I mean, are we, you're gonna get some kind of ruling if it still has to go before the commission?
Yes, we'll get that ruling. The things that I've read, but I'm not an attorney, say that we can do it on their, on our own. And I reached out to some FSFOA contacts that have uh been through one of these and they did not have to go through the county commission. they did not have to go through the county commission. You know, if it was just a millage election, you do have to, but, um, again, we've, we've asked the question of our attorneys and the bond counsel that will be involved.
Being that the district has always supported the county and it never has liked that in the past, I would hope they would be supportive of us as well.
David, to respond to your one question about the amount too.
Yes, sir.
Is, um, you know, we, we work real close with our consultants, but again, you can imagine looking eight to ten years from now, the cost of materials, there's so many unknowns that I think we have to allow ourselves some room and, um...
You, you're going to have to because you're going to, you, you could have an industry come in at any time that's going to employ people, you know, you don't know what it's going to be, but once we get this connector across up at the, in Green Cove, this, this dynamics are all going to change. It's coming now. People are selling out of St. Augustine and want to come this way. And I, I, I get it, you know, it's, it's going to change rapidly.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
But I just, I just need, I'm depending.
Have that max amount.
I, I feel good about what I'm hearing. I just need a, a good, solid recommendation from the superintendent what we need to do.
Yeah, we will, we'll, uh, be available now. I mean, that's why we're doing it now. And, and we want to make sure we, we understand it's hard to nail down, we need exactly as much money. But I think it's like buying a house. We need, we need to know that this is our limit and then I think from there, we can plan accordingly. Ms. Odom's done a great job, I think, just putting it in terms where we can understand and taxpayers can understand what the obligation might be.
Good job, Ron.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay. Any questions? Any? Jane, do you?
No, I, I got my answer, my questions answered.
Okay. This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.